Procedureal remarks. Not seeing any objections. Welcome to the April eighth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the planning board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Kate Ne.
Here.
Phil Giordano.
I'm here.
Josh Ames.
Here.
Sean Weller.
Yeah.
We're also joined by Elijah Romulus, our town planner, Amanda Wolf, our housing and land use planner, Jess Cole, our recording secretary, and Jack Hatfield from Westwood Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast, Channel six and Verizon Channel forty-two. Meetings are also live on the Westwood Media Center's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the planning board's meeting notice that is posted to the calendar section of the town's webpage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot town hall dot westwood dot M A dot U S forward slash. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. If the issue includes a public hearing, the board will then proceed to the public comment portion of the public hearing and will restate the instructions. In this remote meeting format, residents and guests may participate in several ways. Attendees should raise their hand and wait to be unmuted and recognized to speak over the Zoom meeting application or from a telephone dial-up. We will be able to hear you but not see you. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. All right. Um, oh, and we are being joined by Nora Lockne, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Um, Elijah, any changes to the agenda this evening?
Uh, there are no changes to the agenda, but I did want to, I guess, make a comment to um, anyone joining us tonight. The um hearing for the warrant articles will be for next Tuesday, April fifteenth.
Thank you. Um, all right. Since there are no changes to the agenda, we will start with agenda item number one. Twenty-five Fox Meadow Drive dash three hundred Fox Hill Street. Consideration of proposed approval not required A and R plan for twenty-five Fox Meadow Drive slash three hundred Fox Hill Street continued from March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, oh, Mr. Zaka, hi, welcome. I was just about to say, do we have anyone representing the applicant? How are you?
Good evening. How was the board? Hope all is well. Uh, I am requesting another continuance of this, uh, but I thought it was, uh, probably prudent if I came tonight and explained to the board could we've had uh, a few continuances of this. Um, I think the Form A part of this is pretty straightforward. We set it out as a simple two neighbors wanting to adjust some property lines uh, has grown into a, a little bit of a bigger project. Uh, as the board may be aware, uh, there is a, on all the plans, apparently, there is a, uh, twenty-foot emergency access easement uh, that runs across the two properties that are the subject of the, uh, the A and R plan. Uh, and what has come to light when I filed the A and R plan, uh, is that, um, the town may not have received, uh, previously, uh, the, uh, conveyance, uh, of that access easement, uh, to the town. Uh, and more importantly is, uh, there's now a house and a driveway, uh, where the access easement, uh, would have crossed. And, uh, working with Elijah and Nora, we've been, uh, trying to iron out, uh, the best way to address that. I think we've been inching closer and hopefully by the end, what Elijah and Nora have explained, which makes sense is uh, we need to resolve that, uh, before we should move forward with the A and R plan. So I just wanted to give the board an update. I don't know if there's any questions, but we, we, we feel that we're, uh, inching closer. We had a very productive meeting. Uh, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, um, and, uh, I think my client understands, uh, what needs to be done. Uh, I've been in contact with the engineer, making hopefully one final twist to the plan and hopefully by your next meeting, which I believe is May eighth.
May sixth.
May sixth, I'm sorry, May sixth, uh, will be before you having resolved, uh, the access easement issue and then you can take action on probably both of those, the access easement as well as the Form A at that time.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate you coming tonight to give us the update in person. Um, all right. Um, any questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any, any other input from staff.
Uh, yes, Attorney, Attorney Zaka, can you, uh, confirm that your granting of the waiver of time and a continuance request is to, uh, May sixth?
Yes, I'll confirm that. I did send you an email. I know you, I hope you received it earlier where I put that in writing as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if there are no other questions or comments, and this is, yes, it's not a public hearing, uh, if there are no other questions or comments, I would happily entertain a motion.
I move that the planning board accept the applicant's waiver of time pursuant to Mass General Law, Section eighty-one P of Chapter forty-one, and continue the approval not required plan for twenty-five Fox Meadow Drive slash three hundred Fox Hill Street dated December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, and revised through February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five to Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. So moved.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Josh?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Uh, the item is continued to May sixth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All good evening.
Thank you. You too. All right. Um, then our next agenda item is a public hearing for the consideration of an environmental impact and design review. Approval for the installation of two E V charging stations for three standard parking spaces and an A B A space space that will result in the loss of one parking space at two hundred Manhattan Street. I will read an excerpt from the notice. The Westwood Planning Board beholden in-person public hearing on, no, that's not right. The Westwood Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Tuesday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five at seven P M. Regarding an application filed by Sean Clancy on behalf of Town of Westwood Public Schools for consideration of an E I D R approval pursuant to Section seven point three of the Westwood zoning bylaw for the purposes of installing two E V charging stations for three standard parking spaces and an A B A space that will result in the loss of one parking space at two hundred Manhattan Street, Westwood, Mass, oh, two oh nine oh. The property is in the single residency S R C zoning district, land affected, assessors map twenty-one lot zero four eight, property owner, Town of Westwood Public Schools. Quick question before we get into this. Elijah, Nora, anyone, is there an issue with the advertisement saying in person and we're virtual?
Uh, yes, so it was advertised as in person prior to the extension. Uh, we did advertise it in such a way that if it were to move to virtual, which is tonight, that, uh, we were covered for that.
Okay, thank you. I was just reading off the, uh, the piece of paper, so I just wanted to make sure before we got into the discussion. So all is well?
Yes.
All right. Thank, thank you. All right. Um, do we have folks here representing the applicant?
Um, I've tried. Oh, here we go. Okay, Lem is joining now.
Excellent. Thank you. We see you, Lem. But we can't hear you.
Joining, but I, hi, everyone.
Hi, thanks for coming.
I wanted to let you know, uh, we I, I just learned about this meeting this morning, so I think we may be joined by Tom Philbin or someone, Sean Clancy, representing Maverick. So if they're not on yet, we should check to see if they're coming on.
So neither of them are in the attendees.
Okay, well, I, I mean, Elijah, then let me know what you would like me to do other than I, I can just like answer any questions you may have about the documents that have been shared, but otherwise, if I'm not able to, I think we've got to pull this and move to a different date because I was not ready to attend tonight.
Uh, so perhaps we can, uh, Madam Chair, um, continue this to later, uh, in the meeting so we could take up the next agenda item. Uh, I think that may allow some time for the other applicants to join.
I think that makes good sense and then we can reevaluate, um, once we've exhausted the rest of our agenda and pivot. Okay, um, thanks. Thanks for that, Lem.
Thanks. Yep, I'll be back.
Okay. Uh, all right. So then we will move on to agenda item number three. Go back to my notes here. Consideration of a request for a modification to an environmental impact and design review approval to remove shrubs for screening at one forty-one Woodland Road. Um, do we have someone here to present on that? Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. My name is Dwight Dunk, a principal with Epsilon Associates, representing EverSource this evening. EverSource have received authorization to, um, reconstruct the natural gas gate station at one forty-one Woodland Road. The, um, decision included as a condition, uh, number one, um, I won't read it in detail, but to establish a, uh, landscape screening, um, along the north and south sides of the gate station, uh, and that, um, the landscape plan that was referenced and prepared by EverSource or prepared by a consultant for EverSource included, uh, cedars and, um, winter berry, not winter berry, um, to, 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 uh, yeah, yeah, inkberry holly. EverSource did have the trees installed, the shrubs installed. Um, we've conducted annual or, um, actually twice a year inspections of the, uh, trees and shrubs. Uh, we've replaced trees and shrubs as required. Most years, most of the shrubs have succumbed to, uh, the droughts that we've been experiencing in the winter, in the summer. Um, so the, the shrubs have been replaced three times and this would be the fourth year to replace them. We respectfully request a modification to this, um, condition to only, um, require the vegetative cover, um, or screen by, as established by the trees. Um, we included some photos of this, uh, the southern, um, exposure showing a, a dense tree cover. Um, and then the easterly, there's, there are trees that's a little thin, but those trees are growing in. And, um, along the north side, uh, the trees have, um, um, flourished and are created a dense, uh, screen. Um, I, I think the reasoning that the shrubs have not been able to really be get, be, get established and maintained, um, is a few reasons. And if you want to have some, uh, yep, I, if you're, I could, it's just going to ask you on me to share my screen. But, uh, photos one and two are from this, are along the south side. So the trees are providing the, um, a dense screen. Um, and if you scroll down, uh, this, oh, just, uh, figure three is along the east side and there are trees there. They are a little thin, but they're slowly growing in, in, uh, there's, there is one tree there, one or two trees there that do need to be replaced and EverSource will replace those. Um, and then photos three, uh, four and five are trees that are planted on the, uh, inside the, uh, gate station fence line. Um, those are providing a dense barrier. The shrubs have not, uh, grown in very well. And then, uh, photos six and seven are from the north facing south. Um, showing that the trees are provided a dense barrier. That white fence that you see is actually the fence on the opposite side of the gate station. Uh, there is no plastic fencing along the north side. Um, I think the, um, inkberry hollies being a broadleaf, even though it's an evergreen, it's a broadleaf, um, uh, shrub, um, on the south side, it is, um, under a dense canopy of the existing uh, tree cover, so it doesn't get much light. Uh, the, those soils on the site throughout the site are very thin. It's underlying by, uh, underlaid by, um, uh, bedrock, so the soils are thin. Uh, by being thin, they're susceptible to drying out very quickly, uh, during, uh, droughty periods. And the trees on the north side have a nice southern exposure, so they have good sunlight and have grown in very well. And those thin trees that you see on the east, again, those are under dense, um, canopy. Uh, but they are surviving. There is one that needs to be replaced. There is a broken gate, uh, fence section that needs to be replaced. But, um, our request is since the trees are thriving and provide the mass for the visual barrier that the, uh, planning board, uh, consider modifying that condition one to only require the trees, uh, be maintained, um, and not the trees and the shrubs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, um, any comments from staff before I open it up to board members?
Uh, yes, so, um, I have, uh, visited the site, um, a few times with our, uh, conservation agent to, um, you know, make sure that the plantings had taken, uh, and as, uh, uh, Mr. Dunk has mentioned, it, they have unfortunately, uh, not taken, uh, in terms of the shrubs. Uh, there have been some trees that, uh, had to be replaced over the, uh, last few years, uh, but for the most part, uh, the tree line has, uh, been able to, uh, take root and, um, provide some screening. Um, I will, I did do a site visit this morning. Uh, there were two trees, um, that I believe need to be replaced. I saw one was flagged. Uh, there may have been another one that was flagged as well. Uh, so definitely two trees, uh, should be replaced and then the, um, the fence along the, uh, I'll say to the left of the, uh, entrance, uh, doesn't have a section that needs to be replaced as well. Um, I can share with picture that I took just for reference. Uh, so, um, let's say this section of the fence, as you can see, part of it, uh, has gotten blown out and, um, you know, behind this tree, you'll see some of it, you know, some of the panels are, um, kind of are starting to do the same. So I would say this section definitely has to be, uh, replaced. Um, and I, I don't necessarily see an issue with the, um, with the board considering, uh, removal of the shrubs, the, the trees that are planted will, uh, you know, eventually mature, uh, you know, upwards to forty to sixty feet in height and, um, up to ten feet, uh, ten to fifteen feet in width. So I do believe that they will provide, uh, adequate, uh, screening along with the fence, but I do think that the screening of the fence and the trees, um, should be maintained, uh, in perpetuity, uh, and replaced in kind, uh, if there are any issues, um, on the applicant's end.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any questions or comments from board members? I'm not seeing any. Okay, Sean, you just leaned forward. Was that your thinking about a question?
I'm, I'm just thinking, oh, Elijah, you, I know you walked the site with Karen. Um, did Karen have any thoughts that she'd want to express to the planning board, uh, via you? Or did she have any additional commentary beyond what you've just mentioned?
Um, I mean, uh, not, uh, specifically for this, uh, evening, but, uh, in our, um, site walks, um, you know, she has noted that the the trees for the most part are, are being maintained, but there have been at least three, um, that have to, that have been replaced over the years. So I do think keeping the, uh, in kind replacement in perpetuity would, uh, ensure that, that, um, that screening is maintained. Um, as for the, the inkberries, they just, uh, you know, I would say as of last, uh, spring, they had started to take and then the summer just kind of destroyed them. So, um, it's just kind of been an ongoing issue with that side.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board members? No? Um, yeah, I, I'm okay with that. I, I, I know they've replanted. They've tried the bushes, you know, the berry a couple of times, and I don't see any value in continuing to try and replant plants that are just not willing to survive. That, that's almost worse than not putting them in at all. Um, and it, it does look like the tree cover is becoming sufficient. Um, I agree though about maintaining in perpetuity and getting those pieces of the fence replaced and other, I think, I think it's fine. Um, I have no objections with those suggestions slash conditions. Um, if nobody else has anything they'd like to discuss on this, I would entertain a motion.
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair and Board, uh, I'm suggesting a motion for the modification determination as minor and, um, conditions of approval following.
Thank you.
I move that the planning board determine the modifications of environmental impact design review approval for one forty-four, uh, one forty-one Woodland Road as described in the application therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-five to be minor in nature.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Josh?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. The motion carries. We can move on to the, the next motion.
I can do this one. I knew, okay, go.
Uh, I move that the planning board grant the minor modification of the environmental impact design review E I D R approval for one forty-one Woodland Road as described in the application therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, subject to the following conditions. One, except as modified by the conditions and finding herof, the project shall comply with the project plans and with all conditions of all prior decisions for the property in all respects, and the applicant shall pursue the completion of the project with reasonable diligence and continuity. Two, if the project or any condition imposed in this decision requires any other permit, license, or other approval from any Town of Westwood Board, Commission, or Agency, or other Commonwealth or federal regulatory agency, the applicant shall make an appropriate application for the same and shall obtain all required approvals prior to the start of any work. If any condition of such permit, license, or other approval from any other board, committee, or agency is inconsistent with this decision, the applicant shall make application to the planning board for an amendment of this decision, and the planning board shall consider such application in accordance with requirements of M G L Chapter forty-eight subsection nine. And all applicable planning board rules and regulations. Three, uh, any proposed alterations, modifications, deletions, or changes to this decision shall be requested in writing to the town planner and building commissioner prior to implementation. A, proposed alterations which are considered de minimis by the building commissioner may be accepted as a note to file. B, proposed alterations which are considered minor by the building commissioner shall be, shall require the filing of a modification application of said approval for review by the planning board at a publicly posted planning board meeting. C, proposed alterations which are determined to be major by the building commissioner or by the planning board shall be considered by the planning board as a formal amendment to their approval and will require new public hearing before the planning board. Four, the applicant shall adhere to the intent expressed by the planning board at the April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting in landscape screening and plantings as shown on the approved planting plan prepared by B H B dated January eighth, two thousand and twenty, and modified by the applicant on April fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Five, all landscaping approved herein shall be Massachusetts native species and installed at the earliest possible date, but only during the spring growing season running from April fifteenth through June fifteenth or during the fall growing season running from September fifteenth through November fifteenth. Any plantings that do not survive shall be replaced in kind in perpetuity at the property owner's expense.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Uh, Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Uh, that was the last motion on that agenda item. Yes?
That's right.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Dun.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um. I still don't see any of the folks that Lemma needed. Uh, so let's move on to, uh, minutes. Agenda item number four. Draft minutes from March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five and March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. Did everyone get a chance to look at minutes? And did anyone have any changes they would like to suggest? Okay. Excellent. I believe we do need to take these individually, so I would entertain a motion for the March eighteenth minutes. I'm
Bye, Sean.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes for the meeting of March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, uh, that motion carries. Those minutes are approved as written. Um, we can move on to the March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five minutes. If no one had any, uh, sorry.
Well, I, I was gonna make a motion, but.
Perfect.
Um, if I may, Madam Chair, uh, so, um, uh, Sean, because you, uh, arrived after the adjournment of the meeting, you would, you'd have to abstain.
Right, I'll abstain. Yep. Good reminder.
Can he still make the motion though, or, or should it, is it better if it's someone else?
I prefer, um, someone else make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move that the planning board approve the minutes, uh, for the meeting of March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call. Kate?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
John?
I'm staying.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved as presented. Um, all right. Peek at the attendees again. Okay, um, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is agency and committee updates, updates from agency and committee representatives. Uh, has anyone attended any meetings they'd like to report out on?
I have not attended any since our last meeting.
All right. Um, neither have I. This, this has been quiet. Okay, um, then we can move on to, I believe it's miscellaneous updates, general miscellaneous updates and administrative items. Staff, do you have anything for us this evening? Staff, do you have anything for us this evening?
So, this, I, yeah, I would just say for the board to be available for next Tuesday, we do have the warrant articles proposed by the select board, three in total, and so this will be a a hearing for the board to take public comment. You cannot necessarily make any changes, you can recommend changes to the proposed amendments, but this would be up to the select board to ultimately make any changes, so I would just note that going into next week's meeting for taking public comment.
Elijah, that's gonna be the only thing on the, the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, okay, it's just, I'm gonna be traveling, but I'll be there.
Thank you. Josh?
Now, Elijah, I'm just curious, given that we can't make any changes to the articles, what is the expectation from us? Are we, we're not actually approving it, we're holding a public meeting almost in facilitation? Or are we recommending these to be adopted, are we, we putting support behind the select board? With intent?
Yes, ultimately, the board would vote whether or not to recommend recommend sending those articles to town meeting.
But either way, it will go.
Either way, it's up to the select board and the Finance and Warrant Commission.
If, if I could just weigh in there a little bit, so these articles are zoning articles, just like the ones that you review. Mass General Law requires the planning board to hold a hearing on all zoning amendment articles, so whether they are proposed by the planning board, by a petitioner, or in this case by the select board, it's the same process, you review the articles and you vote to send a recommendation to the Finance and Warrant Commission, so that when they consider them on April 28th, they'll have your recommendation as to whether they should consider them for recommendation to town meeting for approval or for indefinite postponement. And then you can also, at the same time, you can, if you think that there's something that should be changed in the articles, you can recommend to the sponsor that they make those changes. But it's up to the sponsor to decide whether or not they'll make changes. And then your last step, as you're required to do, is to send a report to the, to the town meeting. So you already have voted to recommend your five articles for town meeting approval, you would have to recommend these three articles for approval, for not approval, whatever you decide after having your hearing. But you, you come out of this hearing, you can make recommendations to the select board for amendments, you can make recommendations to the FINCOM for approval or indefinite postponement, and you can make recommendations to town meeting for approval or not.
Thank you, that's helpful. Any other questions around, because I, I think this is good, too, I've gotten some questions from residents about the process, because it is a little different than, as we're not the article sponsor, there was some question about how much input does the planning board have, so I think that's useful information for people watching this to have ahead of that meeting. Any other questions or anything on that or anything else? No.
Not related. Sorry.
Please, please, go ahead.
Not, not related to that, but if there's nothing else on that, I know the town's, town clerk's office started reaching out about swearing in, so if you got an email, please make sure you go do that. They're trying to get all those done.
Thank you.
Which I received. Do we swear in for the task force there, Sean? I didn't, I guess not.
I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
I'll verify that.
Well, we'll look into that.
But, yes.
Thank you. Any other updates from staff or board members at this time?
No, I do just think it's a great time to remind residents when our elections are and when our upcoming town meeting is.
Yes, the upcoming local election, our town election, is April 29th. And town meeting is, I don't want to misspeak, because it's a little different this year, May 19th is this town meeting. Both very important, and I hope as many residents as possible are able to engage in both of them. I can go over meeting dates, I was kinda, I'm doing my little tap dance here to see if we're gonna be able to take up that other agenda item, otherwise, I guess, we'll, we'll need to we'll need for Leema to request the continuance formally, correct?
Yes.
I did reach out to Sean Clancy and Tom Philbin, but neither of them have responded.
Okay. Well, I can certainly go over the upcoming board meeting dates, a little slower than I normally speak, and see if that makes a difference. We have, as we just discussed, a meeting on April 15th, 2025, and that is the public hearing to discuss the three additional zoning articles that are sponsored by the select board. We have a meeting on April 28th, 2025, that's actually the Finance and Warrant Commission Article Sponsors Hearing. We have a meeting on May 6th, 2025. And then we have town meeting on May 19th, 2025, and then our next meeting after that, which would also be our reorganization meeting and welcoming our new members, would be May 27th, 2025. And I think I've exhausted the agenda, so I believe we would need to just bring Leema back in briefly and decide how to proceed with that agenda item.
I've invited her to, oh, here we go.
There we go, thank you.
Hi.
Hi, Leema.
Thank you for your patience, yeah, I do apologize that we're not all here for this meeting, so we should request the continuance.
All right. As far as dates, would, would our May 6th meeting work?
I think we should say yes, tentatively, I will make sure that we're better prepared on that day, so let's do that.
And staff, is that acceptable as far as what we already know we have on our plate?
Yes.
Fabulous. All right, then, we have formal requests for continuance, I would just, oh, look at that, we have a motion. All right.
I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for the installation of two EV charging stations for three standard parking spaces and an ADA space that will result in the loss of one parking space at 200 Manhattan Street as described in the application therefore submitted to the planning board and filed in the office of the town clerk on March 5th, 2025 to Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, at 7:00 PM via Zoom, where Zoom link and associated call-in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at westwoodma.gov.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call, Kate? Sean?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, the motion carries, and that public hearing is continued. Guys, guys and gals, I think we may have hit a new record. That is the end of our business for the evening, so unless anyone has anything else to say, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion closed.
I have a motion in a second.
It's too early to go to bed.
I know.
Oh, my God, I'm going partying right now, I can't believe it, 7:38.
Right?
Let me know, let me know where you're headed, Kate, I'll meet you.
I have some suggestion. I'll put it in the chat, I have a motion in a second, is there any further discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, I'll take roll call, Kate?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone, and enjoy the rest.
Have a great night, thank you.